Good afternoon. We are back from our lunch break and we will continue on with working together. And I will turn this back over to Andrea Messina, and the time is 1:00 P. M.
Thank you. And we have a few other items to do. We have one hour, so we're going to kind of move through them. The first item under working together, I'm going to skip around a little bit, is we want to briefly talk about the district core values and the district strategic plan. Now, the little exercise we went through today was really this board's kind of common values. That's not the same as approved district core values. And I did, I personally, like when I come to meetings like this, I like to go on people's websites and see, is it easily accessible for me to find your strategic plan? Because sometimes you might be surprised, it's hidden or buried, whatever. But I was easily able to find it, so I knew exactly what we were looking at. And it's called your Envision 2030 Plan. But my question for board members who've been around for a while before we even go to the beliefs and things like that is, can you tell me the process that was followed to get to this plan? Does anybody remember?
Yeah, so I'm going to say about five years ago, there was a community strategic planning committee that met. And I can't remember whether it was just all one day, but basically, it was built from scratch. You remember this? Anyway, before you?
It was before me even.
Yeah. So it was built from scratch, and it was facilitated by someone, I can't remember who. And it came out with, you know, student achievement as a focus, engagement with the community, et cetera, et cetera.
At a workshop back there. We had a workshop, right?
No, actually, I think it was in the, what's the room, the big room?
Cluase Hachey.
Cluase Hachey room, I think.
Okay.
So it sort of came out with a broad brush. And then Atkins and his staff worked to fill in what kinds of goals might flow under each of those categories. And then it was turned over to staff to do action plans. And then it was brought to the board. I pretty much think that's the way it happened. Now-
I think it happened in your tenure, not ours.
Yeah, it did.
Correct.
Because it changed from 2030. It was something before that.
It was 2020.
2020. It was 2020 with us.
In Vision 2030.
But how it all began is prior to 2016.
Right, right. So and then everything since that has really been looking at, where is the plan? Where are we with the plan? Or do we need to revise it, et cetera? And that's the one thing that we have not tackled since Superintendent Bernier has been here. He has brought to us what his goals are, but we haven't had the opportunity to, well, I think we would have had it had it not been for Ian.
Right. Well, and I don't want to speak for the superintendent, but knowing you're heading into an election, and we knew there was at least one open seat, it might have been one of those strategic things that he was waiting for new people. I don't want to speak for you.
That certainly is part of it. But I think the biggest component was Hurricane Ian. So right now, in what I call in the hopper, right in the bank, we have a great presentation on human resources and the goals and expectations of what human resources is supposed to accomplish on a yearly basis. And that strategic plan update is waiting for an opportunity to bring it forward. Ian happened, clearly changed our focus, and now with the new board seated, we'll have to come back to that. We also plan an academic presentation regarding how we're doing academically, what the data showed us from last year, and also, we've spoken all individually about the differentiated accountability schools, our three schools, we got a grade of a D. They're not D. Schools. They're a school, they've got a D. Grade, and what we're doing to improve those. So I think there's two things we are doing with my team, with Cabinet team, and with agenda items relating, agenda items to how we expect those things to impact student achievement or impact efficient operations. But I think the critical component becomes with this new board, how do we want to think about strategically between now and 2030? How do we take that strategic plan apart in terms of examination of it? And then maybe there are, maybe there is space, suggesting that there is space, to think about, what are our goals moving forward? Because we know we had two years of COVID, which reset the student achievement needle, because nationally, there's been an impact, and certainly within Lee County, there's been an impact. So we'd have to determine whether some of these goals are still even reachable based upon where we currently are. We can still leave them just as they are. But I think it behooves this organization, myself, Kathy Dupuy Bruno included, to have that dialogue about what strategically do we want to accomplish from '23 to 2030? You know, and then allow my staff to incrementally chunk it up for, this is what we think we can get in year one, year two, year three, year four, and then bring it back to the board so the board can examine it and look at it. There may be aspects that we already like, and we don't change anything. But I think in order for a strategic plan to come alive, it has to now come off what I think has been, to some extent, a proverbial shelf, and make it come alive. And then, how do we report to you regularly so that you know, and we can focus on the real business, and the core business of a school district is about student achievement? So how do we continually report on those things, our human resources, because you have to have teachers and bus drivers and other people to make it happen? And how do we report on our operations and our fiscal responsibilities and efficiencies? So it's something I've been excited about getting started. We were not going to do this until we knew what the new makeup of the new board would be. We planned on reporting on the metrics, but we did not plan a refresh of a strategic plan, not a rewrite, but a refresh of what it is until we had board members present.
The important thing about when we initially created it was, it started with the community. And since it's been shelved, the community really hasn't been engaged. And two of our biggest initiatives going forward, pre-K and career and tech, really require the community to be involved if they're going to happen. And so I think it's critical that we think about recombining the community component.
Chris?
So I remember a multi-meeting process where we moved from Vision 2020 to Envision 2030. And I also recall every year, I would say up until we had an interim superintendent, I recall every year, the superintendent presenting to the board on what the goals were for the prior year, and whether they had been met, if not, why not, and what was going to be done differently. And that was really our chance to hold the superintendent accountable for the prior year. So I don't know that I would say it's been shelved as much as it has been, sort of paused because of changes in leadership, and then obviously a hurricane.
Pause may be the better word.
And also, you, like, we can't really evaluate some of the outcomes because they were in place before you arrived. So it's a little hard to hold you accountable for a strategic plan that, we don't have the data to hold you accountable yet, if that makes sense.
You don't have data attributed to my tenure as a superintendent to do that. Next November, you will.
Correct.
Because it's been like two years, approximately two years, if you go back.
It's been two years what?
Since we even spoke about this, because if you're looking at Dr. Savage coming in, and Dr. Atkins leaving, Dr. Bernier coming in, so all of that time, and you're right, Dr. Atkins would speak on that, but when was he here? That's almost, yeah, it's been over two years.
In the midst of a pandemic as well.
Correct. And everything else consolidated.
The attention turned to other things.
Right, correct.
Or an illness. Maybe pandemic's the wrong word.
Yeah, true.
I'm confident that your team, although it wasn't your team at the time, but the district leaders, even if it wasn't something that came to the board table, still used it as guidelines for goals and departmental planning?
They do. In fact, with each one of my direct reports, one of the requirements I had for each of them was to internalize their aspect of the strategic plan, and to make sure that at the top of every agenda, when they meet with me, they have memorialized what they expect their outcomes to be by June of 2024. That gives me a sense of accountability to them, and them to me, regarding moving the needle in that strategic plan area, as well as gives them a sense of accountability to pass down through their staff, to understand that this is what they've promised, in a sense, they'll move for the superintendent. We've agreed that those are the right, appropriate stretch goals for them. And then, we need to continue to proceed to hold people accountable. It's a mix of, strategic plans are really excellent for an organization, because it's a mix of vision and accountability. It's the vision and the stretch that you're looking for. But as people own a strategic plan, then they say, these are the areas where I know, as a human resource, chief human resource officer, this is where I can move the needle. As a chief academic officer or deputy superintendent, this is where I can move the needle on reading, writing, arithmetic, mathematics, you have all those opportunities. And it allows me, then I have the availability to hold my chiefs accountable for moving or not moving that needle, which I don't know, in conversations with them, has always been the process for how they've been evaluated.
So how do you see the conversation about the strategic plan? Like, what are the next steps?
My first step would be to encourage all the board members to go back through and read it. It's very, I do think it's readily accessible as well as the public. I think the first step to Ms. Morgan's point, and I agree that the community needs to be involved, but I think before we involve the community, we want to know what we're involving the community in. If we believe that, for instance, the career and technical side is still appropriate and accurate, and we're doing them, we involve the community in understanding what that implies, bringing the right businesses and leaders to the table so they can help understand what we're trying to accomplish, so we can leverage them and they can leverage us to get the results that we want in career and technical ed. When it comes to reading, writing, and mathematics, science, we need to make sure that we have the appropriate goals based upon where our children currently are and where we want them to be. So I'd like to get involved post-winter holidays with some type of structured dialogue with somebody helping us to facilitate that conversation, because I'd like to participate. And if I wind up facilitating, then, you know, I sort of take a backseat. I also think it would be better for somebody other than the superintendent to be the facilitator. So that's what-
So a workshop, at the very least, is the next step? Is that what?
I think workshops. I would make them plural. I don't believe I've ever seen a strategic plan be revisited and refreshed that happened in one workshop.
No. Okay, so that, as you are planning your calendar for the year, recognizing that this is a top priority item in any district, and there's some need to have multiple workshops on it, I just want to manage expectations, because there's a lot, there's a lot of information in any district, even the smallest districts. What kind of reading curriculum are we using? What about the math? What do we do for recess? What do we do for buses? I mean, there's a ton of information. So what I would want the new board members to, not understand, but to recognize and be prepared for is that, starting with the strategic plan, may mean that some of those other pieces don't come until later, because you only have so many opportunities to get together, and time and focus, and this being the driving document for everyone's work, there's a priority to this. And that those meetings taking place over the next year, if you look in, we tend to look in two-year increments, because that's when elections occur. So this board will be together for two years, we know. So what can you do in the next two years? How are you going to plan out the work for the next two years? And Debbie, I know you're the chair sitting here today, but somebody else may or may not be the chair next week. It might be you, it might be somebody else. But maybe thinking through the whole two-year, how are we going to do it? When do we want all those workshops to have concluded, so that we actually have what we're looking for, and really making a plan to ensure that you get to those places? Kathleen?
So that's something I've long argued for. We have a budget schedule for a year. We've had that forever.
Right.
We should have the same thing for the strategic plan.
Do you have a policy that calls for it?
No.
Then it's just a good idea.
There you go. And then the same thing for oversight. When are we looking at our employees? At what point in time? So that at the beginning of the year, everybody knows when we're going to be talking about Dr. Bernier.
Right.
Everybody knows when we're going to be talking about a particular component of the strategic plan. You can see it ahead. And that's why we kept getting caught up in things that we wanted to talk about, because we could never get them on a schedule where we felt confident that some of these things would be addressed, so.
Melissa?
And that's correct. So we have this parking lot list, they call it. And that, I think, has derailed us. And we spent more time talking about the parking lot list than actually making a plan to execute any of it. And then, sometimes, some of the things would fall off the parking lot list, because they somehow resolved itself in some of the meetings, I think sometimes truly by accident, or, you know, they were irrelevant. So, I mean, she's correct. There was no real, goals are planned, set, and a timeline of when we are to do those. And that makes it sometimes, you're on this train and you're going, but guess what? You get derailed. And then you're derailed for an amount of time. It's just, and it becomes very frustrating. And there's where some of the things happen at the dais that you're trying to keep on track, or there's a few of us trying to keep on track, and then there's always the derailment.
I would say, I don't know how many of you are familiar, but what you're describing, it's right into Stephen Covey's time matrix. If you know anything about Stephen Covey and the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, there's four quadrants. And if you allow the important, there are some important and urgent items. Hurricane Ian is a perfect example. That was important and urgent. But you can't take non-important and make them urgent, because then that quadrant becomes bigger. And the important and not urgent, which is strategic plan, it's not urgent. We could bump it next week if we had to, but it is really important. You want to keep that area, the strategic, the governance thinking, the high-order thinking, where you spend most of your time, and you don't let those other things derail those conversations. And the way to do that is to build in those schedules, as you described. So you would then have, in your protocols manual, you'd have the budget schedule, the accountability schedule, and the strategic plan schedule, if you will. And it may be a two-year schedule that you're looking at, not just a one-year, because of the cycle of board members, you know, or elections, I should say. And then you have one calendar that maybe blends them all together. So January, here are five things that we're focusing on, February, March, April, as the year progresses. And back to the strategic conversation, when you can do it with the broad picture, there may be reasons why there are certain times of the year you have to talk about, if there's going to be changes to the student code of conduct, or the pupil progression plan, or whatever. So those months, maybe those are the areas of focus, instead of some of those others, which allows you to build in and then stay focused on your priorities. So really, staying focused on those priorities and not getting derailed by, that's not to say they're not important, but they may not be the urgent issues, but they can be, if you allow them to be. And I personally appreciate that you all kind of recognize that we don't want that to happen. We want to stay focused, you know, keep the main thing the main thing. Isn't that what they say? So. There are three elements to your strategic plan. Your vision is student success. And it looks like you have three categories here, progressive, personal, and passionate. And you've got certain things under that. But you also have the actual vision, the mission, and then your values. And based on what you all said, integrity, high expectations, accountability, belief in students, and professionalism, none of that conflicts with the group prioritization of common beliefs. It all fits together perfectly. Belief in students, we didn't spend a lot of time talking about. I know I mentioned it before, but that's one of those things that makes a difference in how boards operate. If board members truly believe that all students can learn, then they will set those expectations, and they will set those goals to ensure that that happens. If there's some belief by a board, and by board, I mean the board corporate, not individual people, but if there's some belief on the board that, well, all kids can learn except these students, whoever they may be, you're not setting your district up for maximum success. So I just appreciate that you all have that acknowledged in your strategic beliefs, values, excuse me, your values. So like I said, Debbie, I know you're the chair now. I don't know who the next chair is going to be, but I think the first step is actually going to be creating those sort of schedules, and talking about them, so that board members can have that conversation.
So just for clarification, we do have a policy, 1.07, that is the strategic plan policy. And it does have some timetables in it. So maybe a refresher of what those timetables are, staff has some requirement, superintendent, and then certain things do come to the board.
Perfect. And that's exactly, if you want it to happen, you put it in policy, because otherwise, it's just a good idea. Any other thoughts on the strategic plan? Or we move on? I don't want to miss anybody.
We do have that strategic plan, 1.07.
All right, let's talk about some communication expectations. Oops. Can you put that back Thank you. Sorry. Let's get to some communication pieces here. Wait, we've done a lot today as I go through all this. Okay, communications expectations. I do have sort of, this is homework. This is not something that we're going to finish complete today.
Thank you.
But there are some things, as we said, about what can create distrust from the board to the superintendent, or the superintendent to the board. And this particular document , I'll reiterate some of them, starting on the first page where it says, this board expects. So there are certain things that the board expects. Then there's the next page, which is the superintendent expects. And then you have some agenda agreements, meeting preparation agreements, during the meeting agreements, after the board meeting agreements, site visit agreements, and board and community communications. All of these are worth talking about it. I'm confident that this district already has some of these processes in place. So I would like those of you who've been around for a while to kind of help us understand what some of those that are already in place are, so that the new people know exactly what to expect, and when they can expect it. So who wants to start with one that you're familiar with, or that you want to, superintendent? Sure.
So when it comes to board member regular communication, we do one-on-ones every two weeks. So every other week, prior to the agenda being produced, or just after the draft is complete, I have a one-on-one meeting to cover the items. You have the opportunity, and we can introduce you to the specific website to list out things you want to communicate with me if you desire. I can do the same thing by helping to set an agenda as well of items I would like to talk about. Additionally, then, usually on Thursdays and Fridays, I also run a process of calling you each individually. So the one-on-one is a more formal aspect, covering the business of the board, other things. Thursday and Friday, you would expect a phone call from me, wanting to catch up with you for the week, what's been transpiring, anything on your list. I usually will use a phrase like, before we go into the weekend, is there something you need to be working on, something I need to be working on beginning Monday morning, or over the weekend, those types of things. Sometimes those conversations are very short, sometimes they're very long. So, for instance, we, last week had our one-on-ones. I finished with the new board member one-on-ones this week. So this Thursday, you could expect a phone call from me at some point during the day, despite the fact that I will not be in town, to just check in with you, to say, you know, how are things going? Do you have any questions? Do I need to get with staff on a particular issue? Do you have any burning condition that's going into the weekend that you need me to pay attention to right now? Those one-on-ones can be done a couple of different ways. They can be done face-to-face, like all of you, the most recent elected board members did. You can also do them by telephone. A little harder to share documents via phone, but there are times where you won't be available to come in for a face-to-face. But that one-on-one cadence is incredibly important to getting the meeting agendas right, getting the briefings right, making sure that you have all the information so you can ask questions prior to the board meeting, have those questions answered, and then be at the dais, fully understanding what the consent agenda looks like. Additionally to that, we have a cadence by which we, we've got to start, stop using the word cadence, Mr. Ramirez. We have a rhythm and approach to how we approach communication with the board. When we have a large item, such as like the cancellation, the cancellation of school, or the restoring of operations last Friday, we communicate with the board first. We usually will communicate via email. I will send you a text, or Michael will send you a text that the email's in your account. You know what we're talking about and why we're restoring our operationals. We could go operational last Friday, and we were very excited about that opportunity to do it after Nicole. Only then does the information go to Cabinet. From Cabinet, it goes to principals, and from principals, it goes to staff, and only then does it get released to the community. Now, there's not a lot of time in between those steps. You can usually get a text ahead of time. You'll get the email shortly after that. There's about a five-minute pause before we tell Cabinet. There's about a four-minute pause before we tell principals. There's about a four-minute pause. It's not like we wait a day. But most recently, we, there are the times where the same process is followed, but it takes longer. takes longer. Recently, I had board conversations with all of you regarding, there was an incident occurred on Friday, which has led to an early retirement. I wanted you to be aware of that retirement, so I communicated with the board members first. Only then did we go out to the impacted organization and have conversations with them. Employee tells us what they're doing late on a Friday afternoon, by Monday, all of you know what transpired. By today, my staff is in front of that group of individuals explaining. There's a cadence by which we work with the board members always being first.
I have a question about your one-on-ones.
Mm-hmm.
Are they 45 minutes, 30 minutes, an hour? Is it consistent?
I, you will hear me refer to something as I refer to as a clinical hour. They're scheduled for, they're scheduled for an hour. There's enough time for me to have a full hour, but you'll see it on your schedule pop as normally a 45-minute window. So that gives us a 15-minute wiggle room towards the end of the meeting. And we stick very closely to the agenda, the same agenda is covered with every single board member.
And the reason I'm asking is because if I have a bunch of items, and I know I only have 45 minutes, I'm going to prioritize if I have the face-to-face time. I may save some till next week when you call me on Thursday, but I want to know what kind of time I'm looking at. And for that phone call on Thursday, that you make those contacts with individual board members, if a board member hears something throughout the week, let's say it's Monday, and it's not a, it's nothing that puts a child at risk, it's nothing that would be illegal, or immoral, or anything like that, but it's just a concern that somebody raised, would you want to hear about that on Monday through some avenue, perhaps your chief of staff? Or would you want me to hold it until Thursday, when you call me and I can go, hey, here's something I just wanted to share with you?
I think if it's a sharing point, there's two avenues with boards, which board members have. One is, well, there's actually three. One is to call me and say, I'm hearing this, I'd just like you to know. I've had many conversations with board members, says, this is not an action item for you, I just want you to be aware. In some cases, they, some board members are comfortable because they think I'm really busy, they call Michael instead. Michael is another, I'm speaking to Mr. Ramirez, he is another conduit to me. There is not a day goes by that we don't talk to each other and catch up on, who have you heard from, who have I heard from, what are we working on, making sure we're together, that's both in the morning, and the afternoon, or the late evening when we go home. If it's on your mind, I'd rather have you reach out, or to send me a text earlier, but, hey, when you have a second, can you give me a call? That gives us an opportunity to converse and respond to each other in kind at that point. It's very important, though, that a lot of times what will happen is some of those things will arise through email. We have a consistent response, and I'm proud of the, all of the board members that currently are represented by their plaques, but everyone here as well. They're very, they're very specific to say, thank you very much, that sometimes they'll respond a little bit to the complaint, and that they're, they also have that same concern, but they're going to turn it over to the superintendent and his staff, in this particular case, his or her staff. When we get a solution to that, we respond to all board members. So when we resolve that issue, we're really good not just responding to the board member who asked the question, but making sure all the board members get that response.
Melissa? I don't think, you mentioned the weekly update we get on Fridays in the board docs. So sometimes the questions that come through him that we aren't aware of, are, will, the answers will be in the weekly update, which is in board docs that comes out weekly. And it's through board docs as?
So that, as a board member, when you see that, it alerts you, oh, somebody asked about this, I didn't know anything about it, but now I know that's an issue in that part of the county or something.
It actually kind of has an agenda, and it's usually at the bottom, it'll say, board member questions, or whatever, and they'll, they'll put the question there, and they'll have the answer.
So it really is helpful to read it, because then you know what's happening in other areas, and what other people's concerns are, not just the ones that you raised.
Correct, because you don't know what other people.
Sure.
You don't know what you don't know, right?
Right.
So sometimes I'm reading like, oh, you know, so it's just informative.
Okay.
So sometimes that's also generated, so the weekly update, which, thank you for bringing it up, it was on my list to talk about, the weekly update comes out every Friday, it's embedded in board docs, you would go in and you get it.
Who receives it?
All the board members.
That's it?
And certain members of cabinet.
Okay.
It allows each one of our divisions to give you an update as to what is happening in their particular area, whether it's operations, facilities, construction, academic services, our legal department sometimes puts information in there regarding, and it's just a weekly update, it's a way of ongoing communication. But a lot of times you'll hear at the dais, somebody says, you know, you don't need to respond to that now, it'd be okay to put it in the update. We capture all those questions in a board meeting, we get them answered, and we put them in the update. So in some cases, they have heard the question. The ones that are more uncommon are the ones where a particular board member receives, because you're going to get multiple communications, they're going to, they're going to email all of you. So it's not unusual for one board member to forward it to me, and immediately upon reading it, for me to write back, I'm on it, and I'll respond to the entire board, just, I'm on it, meaning my staff is aware, you don't have to forward me that email on top of the other individual who's already sent it to me. The board members are good about copying each other, just to say, we've received this complaint, I'm going to alert my fellow board members, the superintendent and his staff will respond. So then we go to work. When we get the response, that response is sent back to all board members, not just the board member who was the first to forward the issue or the concern.
Now, I do want to pull in your attorney on the board members copying everyone, because I want you to address that, if you don't mind.
So they specifically put, do not reply all, so we don't have an engagement and communication, because that will be a violation of sunshine. So they basically just send an email exactly what Dr. Bernier said, and this is coming from their protocol manual. We received it, we acknowledged the concern, we're sending it to the superintendent, and that's pretty much it. So there is no engagement and discussion.
Yeah, so you have to be really careful when you're copying other board members about the content of your message, so that it doesn't violate sunshine. And that's why keeping it simple, factual, I'm handing this off, I liken it to being a traffic cop, you go here, you go there, I gave you, you sent me the message, sent it to the superintendent, I handed it, like that. But if you start getting into it with any sort of, it could be business, it could be parent, it could be employee, and then you start copying board members, that can create a real problem for you. So rule number one, always ask your attorney, right? Make sure, if you're, if you're not sure about anything, ask your attorney. That's, that'll keep you safe.
And your superintendent does the same thing.
Yeah.
When I have a question about how I should respond, or what I should put in the content of an email, I do go to Kathy, because I want to keep the board members out of harm's way. So what I'm saying about an initial issue or concern that may come across to board member Jordan's email she sees at first, she will write back to that parent, or individual, or that organization, and say, I've received your information, I'm copying my fellow board members so that they're aware, this matter's being transferred to the superintendent. At that point, I guess what Andrea's saying, and what Kathy's saying, is don't do anything more with that email, just receive it and say, thank you very much. When I respond, or when Michael responds, or a member of the staff responds, it's a little annoying when you get it, because it comes usually at the top, before I even say, good morning, or good afternoon, it will say something like, please do not respond to all to avoid any sunshine violation. Then it says, good morning, we researched this issue, this is how we resolve the situation, or this is how that case is continuing to be worked. And then, and then you then can call me, or you could email me separately for more, and I usually include at the bottom, 90% of the time, I say, if you have any additional questions, please call me, and I give you my phone number. I know you have my phone number, but sometimes it's nice just to be able to touch it on your touchscreen and have it immediately dial me, so.
But also, though, a lot of times the emails, it looks like you are the only person receiving it, but everyone has received that same email. And then we did have, you said that standardized message, like you just kind of like alluded to.
I think there's one in the protocol manual.
There is.
What we use, and that way it goes right to them, they handle it, and then it's done. So, yeah.
You, you will want to solve problems, because you're in a position where you can help people get problems solved. So you will want to solve problems. But it's really staff's job to solve those problems. You pay people to solve those problems. And so you taking the problem and giving it to who needs it to solve it is more effective and efficient than you trying to solve it, because I will tell you, I've been working with school boards now over 20 years, and I'm not suggesting that the employee doesn't give the full side of a story when they're sharing it with you. I'm not suggesting that the parent doesn't give a full side of the story when they share it with you.
God forbid the student.
There you go, God forbid the student doesn't tell the parent the full side of the story. But my experience says that many times there are huge elements being left out. And so it's those pieces that are being left out, if you're solving a problem and you don't know about some major piece, it can be a real problem.
I will share with you that there's a great phrase that's come up, and it came up from an elected official here in this community. We use cadence a lot, we use, right, that's a, you're going to get annoyed by the word if you're not annoyed by it already. But there's a, there's a rhythm to how we communicate, making sure the board's aware first. But the other phrase that I've picked up, because the phone call came in, there was a particular situation, and this particular elected official said to me, as the facts were reported to me.
Ah.
This person told me all of this, I'm just relaying the facts of what I was told. I'm not passing judgment on the school system, you as a superintendent, or your staff. These are just the facts as they were reported to me. That's the way we approach then, going deeper, because we want to make sure that our principals, and our leaders, and those individuals who may be in the thick of something, understand that our, our goal is not a gotcha. Our goal is to resolve the problem and look, to go back to a Covey principle, go to look for the win-win. How do we solve the problem for the constituent, or the parent, or the student? And how at the same time do we give that leader an opportunity? Because sometimes people circumnavigate a chain of command, and they come directly to you, or directly to the superintendent, and they've never discussed the issue with their building-level principal, as an example.
Melissa? And it's not our job, we don't, not have the means, we're out of our lane when we, when we try to solve it, because we can't, we don't have, we don't have the information. That's why it's staff's job to solve it, because they're going to gather all the information. What we need to be confident in is that that staff.
Correct.
And that we have policy that's making sure staff is gathering all the information accurately, and reporting it correctly. And our policy needs to reflect that, so that that is happening.
Okay.
And so that's why that, our policy is so important, because if we have a little loophole, or we've not covered something in policy, sometimes the outcome has not been officially reported right, and gathered correctly. So I think that's where sometimes, in the past, our weakness has been.
Okay. Interesting. What other things on this particular document, do you already have processes for that you want to share related to communications?
Communications, clearly, there's a piece on here related to agenda items. We work very, like I said, we established a calendar of deadlines for our cabinet members to have items ready for a cabinet meeting. Every agenda is reviewed in full, whether it be a briefing agenda, workshop, or business meeting. All those meetings are reviewed ad nauseam, including the presentations, so that when I have a draft for you, why I seem so intelligent when I talk to you about 27 items on an agenda is because I've spent countless hours with my staff reviewing and asking those same questions that you have of me regarding those items. I'm very deeply indebted to a very wonderful group of people who are not in the boardroom with us today, because they're all sitting at their computers watching, or listening to this in the background. So a shout-out to them, because I know, I know they're watching and listening, because they're texting me as we go, about other things that are developing in the district as we speak. But I think that's another aspect of making sure that we have items that are done, and when I say they're complete and put to bed, that they are complete and put to bed. We are not going to bring good cause items unless they are truly for good cause. And my staff has learned that. They've come to me, oh, we need to put one more item on. No, the deadline has passed, that's, and, and it's, it's been, it's been difficult sometimes, because they were used to a process where they could bring items late, and we were, we were posting right up until the board meeting, in prior, what I understand, under prior administrations. That's not the way I want to operate with all of you, because I want you on a Tuesday, when it's posted, to know that agenda's not going to shift between now and the board meeting. So.
Debbie?
Well, and I, I want to say too, as far as like preparation for meetings, there's no reason for any of us to ever be not prepared for any of these items, because the opportunities that we do have to get with the superintendent, to, in our meetings before each of the meetings that we do have, to allow us to ask those questions, so that way we are able to get those answers back. So to me, it's like, when we come here, we always need to be ready and be prepared. And that's the same with, on page three, where it's talking about negativity, if there's any, if you hear any positive or negative comments in the community, that is something that, you know, we really need to make sure that we are sharing that with the superintendent, so that way we are prepared for, when meetings come, you know, what does that look like? What is the audience going to look like? What are the people, you know, what's the possibility of what's going to come in, and what are they going to speak on? So you want to always be prepared for that, that way, you know, if you have to make a statement ahead of time, or, you know, you just need to be prepared. And I just think that, and we have like the QR code that's here on the door for people to, you know, zoom in, so you know what the agenda is. On the website, we have our agendas, there's, it's just, there's no possible way that you cannot be unprepared, unless you just don't do anything. So you have lots of opportunities.
I want to give an example that you reminded me of, and that was, in a school district, they were doing redistricting of schools, and if you want to get your community to come out and complain about stuff, redistrict a school. And so you're talking about the positive and negative comments related to redistricting. There was one neighborhood that was going to be redistricted somewhere else, but the people in that neighborhood really wanted, for, it had to do with transportation and how they walked, or I don't even remember the reason, but they really had some compelling arguments about why they should stay in the one. Now, nobody wants to be redistricted, but there was an argument for, a compelling argument for why they would want to stay. Board members, hearing that, are prepared at the board meeting to say to the superintendent, okay, I appreciate this redistricting plan, but what about this community over here, blah, blah, blah? By not sharing that with the superintendent before the meeting, it kicks that decision down another two weeks at least for that change to be made. If the board members had gone to the superintendent, because they ended up making the change, and the superintendent recommended the change, but the superintendent didn't even know it was an issue until the meeting, when they were supposed to vote on the redistricting. So now, all the parents who are coming and complaining, were complaining about something that could have been fixed, could have been edited, could have been slightly tweaked before the meeting, and there was unrest unnecessarily.
Right.
So sometimes telling the superintendent, and that active listening that you all talked about, can help prevent unnecessary disruption. I want to ask you about consent agenda items, okay? Back to the issue of surprises at a board meeting, your consent agenda will have what some people would argue are kind of routine contracts. Every year, you'll have a contract with the health department, with the YMCA, with the Boys and Girls Club, those kind of routine contracts. The first time you're going through those contracts, especially as a new school board member, you're going to read and understand. The next year, you'll see, oh, I remember this contract, it's the same contract, that's why it's on the consent agenda. Your attorney will likely give you a red-line version, so you'll see what changes, if any, are made, so you'll know what you're looking at. But do we really need to have a 20-minute discussion on the same contract that we've done for 10 years? Maybe, maybe not. So if I need to pull a consent agenda item, and I don't tell the superintendent in advance, and it is, call it the Boys and Girls Club, and I say, I want to pull the consent agenda item on the Boys and Girls Club, but the superintendent didn't know, so the superintendent doesn't have the Boys and Girls Club in the audience to help answer the question, once again, it delays action on something by not doing the communication in advance. So when and how do they let you know if they're going to pull something on the consent agenda, or what's the expectation in this district?
And the expectation is that we get that notification, I would hope that I would get that notification during the one-on-ones. And then during the one-on-ones, if there were additional questions on an item, that's where we'd start first. I have some questions about this item, can I have these answered? We, we had briefed that last week, I briefed the new board members yesterday on the agenda. Tomorrow, at the work session where Dr. Cupid McCoy will be at the dais in my absence, she is prepared to answer board member questions. Board members have already written in, I don't have questions. I have this particular follow-up, I know we have one on the TAN-TAX anticipation note that Jennifer will be prepared for to answer. If that doesn't satisfy a board member, and we can't resolve it with additional questions, the earliest knowing that they're going to pull an item is the better. Then the superintendent can work with the chair. We know the poll's coming, I know the reasons why the poll is coming, and it's not scrambled to defend, it's a scramble to answer. It's a scramble for us to make sure that we have the right people in the boardroom to handle any additional questions, because when it's pulled off consent, it becomes a non-consent item. because when it's pulled off consent, it becomes a non-consent item.
Right.
And it's important that we have the right people in the room in order to be able to dialogue with you, to either make you feel comfortable enough to vote no or yes, depending on how you want to vote, or to say, you know, "You've answered all my questions, but I'm still uncomfortable with that." I know, I think an important factor, I just want to get this, and then I'll be quiet, is that my job is to make a recommendation to the board. I have to tell you either vote yes, my recommendation is either vote yes, or to not approve. I rarely will bring a negative, right? I'll try to avoid that, right? I'm always gonna bring the recommendation, "I think this is the best way for us to proceed forward." If you say no to that as a board, that just changes what I do on Wednesday morning. I mean, literally, I move, I've shared with all of you, and I think I can use this example, Kathy. A previous board just approved the portable campus for Hector Cafareta. I was prepared, if the board voted no on that, I was prepared with a solution for Hector Cafareta the very next day. It wouldn't have been a very popular solution, but it would have been a solution to the situation that Hector Cafareta and their parents were involved, and the students there were involved in. You make the decision, my team then administrates that decision. That's the way I look at our relationship. It's deeper and more, it's better, it's more than that. But ultimately, what it boils down to is when this elected board makes a decision, we follow those rules and we do the work in the will of the board.
Chris?
So our protocols require board members to give each other and the superintendent 24 hours' notice and a written explanation of why it's gonna be pulled.
Okay.
When I say our protocols require, our protocols are not policy. So it's really just a professional courtesy to sort of follow those protocols because there is no policy to enforce the following of them. And the same is true for any new motions.
And page nine in the protocol book has a bunch of those things. But the reality is, go ahead.
The only thing I wanted to add was, we do discuss items over and over and over again at workshops, and we have tons of opportunity to discuss them in the public. So if you're recommending, you know, that we change Bonita Springs High School colors to red and white, and I'm gonna vote no on that, I'm gonna pull it, but I've likely said it in a previous workshop or briefing. So I don't feel the need to really explain it the night of the meeting, because I've already talked to you guys about it. You already know why I'm voting no. So what might appear to be to the public to be a no vote by Chris with no explanation is actually something my whole team understands quite well. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. And I was just gonna say, in some occasions, there might be something on the consent agenda that you didn't see or for some reason missed, and it could come up at the last minute that something comes to your attention and you still need to pull an item. It's still okay to tell the superintendent, what time do your board meetings start, 5:30?
Six.
Six. At 5:30, if you know you're gonna do it, it's still okay to say, "Hey, Mr. Superintendent, I'm sorry this came up last minute, but such and such came to my attention. I'm gonna have to pull this because I need to talk about it on the record." The recommendation is 24 hours, it's good practice, it's professional courtesy. That does not mean if something comes up that you can't do it. Debbie?
I was just gonna say, we always try to do the 24 hours, because the fact, there are some that are pulled without any kind of, you know, information, it's just done because they want it to, for the public to hear it again.
Sometimes they're, okay, that's back to the strategy conversation. There may be things on the consent agenda that strategically you want to pull to illustrate to the community that something's happening or being done, or reaching a goal, or something. So that there's a strategy sometimes for that, yes. Is that what you're talking about?
No, they just, they just want to bring it forward, and then we vote for everything except that.
Correct.
And then that one is then, comes back again-
Becomes an action item.
After, you know, we do the celebration of the new people, and then we bring that one back and we do another vote, have conversation, and then, you know, devote on it again.
Kathleen?
And I would also mention that if there are things that you want to highlight in the agenda, that's when board member comment comes in. That's one of the purposes of board member comment at the end, so that probably you get a chance to tell the public that we approved this MOU, this is what it means for kids, or this is what it means for schools, this is a community partnership, et cetera, et cetera. You don't need to pull the item to highlight it. You can highlight it in your comments if you want.
But you do have to pull it to vote-
Go ahead.
You do have to pull it to vote no.
Yeah, oh, well, yes. If you were gonna vote no, but if you're gonna vote yes just to pull it, just to say it, but I'm gonna still vote yes.
Or you have to pull it to refuse yourself as well, that's a conflict.
And getting things on the agenda, and understanding the agenda, and how the agenda works, I realize we're spending a significant amount of time on this, but that is one of the earliest and most frequent frustrations that new board members have. Something happens, they're like, "How did that happen? Why did that get on the agenda? How did it go? Why can't I get something on the agenda? Why do I have to do this? What's the hoop on that?" So we really want to make sure that you guys are positioned for success and for minimal frustrations.
And let me give you an example from the recent history. I came on board as a new superintendent to the school district of Lee County, and there had been a prior ask from board members specifically for an organization to join, in a sense, join the team in an organization called Acceleration Academy. They are a private provider of an alternative site that helps young people who have dropped out re-access curriculum and re-access a path towards graduation. If you recall the meeting, one of the board members at one point wanted that particular vendor to come and present before the board. All I asked for was an opportunity, since I knew it was now a priority of the board, because I wasn't fully aware that it was a priority prior to this, was an opportunity first, before we did that, to have an opportunity to address the matter. And I think within four short weeks, I know within two to three short weeks, we had a contract finished, and probably at the next or the following board meeting, we approved Acceleration Academy. That item, if it had come, I guess more plainly to me, maybe I missed it, maybe I didn't see or notice in my short tenure that that was a vital thing for the board. I can't believe I missed it, but I could have. But once I truly knew it was a passion, and that's where we wanted to head, we tried to make that happen as quickly as possible. And yet, that had taken years, under previous administrations, to even begin to move forward. So I, there's nothing we can't talk about in terms of an agenda item. I just need to know what your priorities are, and that's, in a sense, what we started with. We started about, "Tell me a little bit more about your family. Do we use a hyphenated name? How do, you know, we said some things that were kind of weird, but I wanted to make sure I was addressing you appropriately, both privately and publicly." There's nothing we can't talk about in a one-on-one. And then that gives me the opportunity to then cross-pollinate with the rest of the board members one-on-one so that they know where and why I'm headed in a particular direction.
We have about seven minutes left. I want to make sure that we've hit all of your priorities and all of the priorities for the rest of you, or any specific questions that anyone has that they need answered before the meeting on the 22nd.
My priorities are very simple. I want to have a great working relationship with this board. I want to continue to do the work that I think we've demonstrated we're capable of doing as an academic team and as an operational team, and I'll divide those that way. I think academically, we're beginning to turn the corner on some particular issues related to the supervision of our schools and the supervision of our team and driving the academic achievement needle. Operationally, I think we were very excited at one point about, you know, 22 schools in Cape Coral being down without bottled water, without water, and we delivered, you know, 75,000 water bottles before 7:00 AM. We thought we had hit the big operational issue, then Hurricane Ian arrived. Hurricane Ian taught us that we were playing in the small minor leagues through that. But operationally, we've proceeded, and by no means is that complete. But I want to continue that opportunity to work as a team moving forward. And I think for me, and really proud without, somebody said to me, you know, "I just need to clear the air. I have to be honest about something." That is the most important thing we can be with each other, is just be honest. You may not like what I have to say, and I may not always like what you have to say, but I have to respect that you've been elected by this community to speak for your constituents and on behalf of these students and their families. My job is to try to find a way to make things happen for all of you in line with what strategically we're trying to accomplish with our young people, and really turning out kids who can reach their highest potential. I will do that with integrity. I will do it with honesty. And I love the phrase, "I don't like surprises." I don't like surprising other people. I don't like to be surprised either. So the way we do that is consistent communication and dialogue, probably to the point when you look at your phone and you go, "Oh, God, not again." Right? But when we get to that point, tell me that, right? You know, tell me that. I will tell everyone in this room that's my staff that they can call me, and I will sometimes let them go to voicemail. When you call me and I see your name on the phone, I'm gonna step out of where I am to take that phone call, to make sure that I'm reaching back. I will immediately text you and say, "I'll call you right back." So I think it's about communication. I think it's about honesty. I think it's about transparency with each other. So don't have that agenda item that you want to get out there, but you're not quite sure how to bring it up. Just bring it up, and we'll figure out a way forward to make it happen, as long as it's aligned with the resources we have and strategic plan. If it's not aligned with the resources, then I will work with you to decide, "Okay, if we want to do X, and it costs this much money, then what do we have to do over here in order to create that opportunity within the budget?" Because it is a finite, it is a finite sum. So those are, me in a nutshell, very simply, I think.
Questions? Anybody have questions? Yes.
I may have missed this, but in regards to, just generally, for the memo with the 24-hour notice, who is that memo going to? Is it going to Dr. Bernier?
It would come to me, and then I would communicate immediately with the board chair, and then we'd work with the attorney, and we'd make sure all the board members were-
Oh, for pulling consent, I guess.
Yeah, I just want to, I saw in here on page nine, I think it was, but I just wanted to double-check. I was a little unclear on that.
So normally, what they will do is, we're pulling item I-5. And board members are pulling item I-5, and that will be sent to Dr. Bernier, and that will be sent to the entire board, so everybody is aware.
Yeah, the entire board.
Okay.
And I will usually respond with a phone call to say, "Okay, we're informing everybody. What else can I, what else can I help with to be ready for that?"
What other information do you need? Who needs to answer questions for you? Is there some data that you need, whatever that is?
And I think, can I just add one more thing? I think sometimes with boards, there's some confusion about the availability of staff. The staff is available to you. I've trained my staff, though. They're not 100% yet. But I've told them, if you get a phone call directly from a board member, to say, "Wow, that sounds like a really great idea. Yes, I think I could probably be working on that. Have you spoken to Dr. Bernier?" That is their gentle reminder. That's what I call it. It's their gentle reminder for you to go, "Oh, yeah, I didn't do that part." Or, but if you need the chief academic officer, or you want to talk to the chief of staff about a particular issue, or you want somebody in planning to look deeper into some demographic information, by all means, the staff is available to you to do those things. I just want to know what we're asking them to do so I can prioritize it in their work plan of the work they're already trying to accomplish.
And can I say something real quickly related to that? The question you ask and the timeframe it takes to answer that question may not match up with your priority, especially if you don't know what, like, if there's a report due in Tallahassee with your IT department and a board member comes in, doesn't even know that the reports do, but says, "Hey, I'm looking for this information." He can't pause that person's work that day. That's why you need to build it into the plan, and that's why you kind of need to know about. I'm sorry, Sam.
And just procedures, so would we just carbon copy on that? Do we talk to you first in regards to talk to that staff member?
I would ask that you call me. Let's talk about who you want and why, and then I'll make that staff member available to you, and I'll get them to call you.
Thank you.
So that's also in our protocol manual, and we have a policy that addresses that as well in terms of communications with staff. That's board policy 1.03. So the recommendation, the current policy in our protocol manual, is to always contact the superintendent first, and then say, you know, "I need to speak to Mr. Dotick in HR about this particular issue." You and superintendent have a conversation. He may even be able to answer the question for you, and then he can say whether or not it needs to go to another, to Mr. Dotick. The policy is very explicit in terms of, if you get concerns raised about personnel matters, you go directly to the superintendent first. You don't contact staff first. Other questions?
If you want to visit a school, or, sorry about that.
Stop my question.
Or a technical college or something like that, I would assume, would we go to the secretary? Or would you notify the superintendent and let him?
I bet that's in the protocol manual.
That's the secretary's set that up, right?
So-
Go ahead.
So with regards to visiting schools, per statute, you're entitled to visit any school that you want to visit. It's the logistics of how you're going to accomplish that. So as a courtesy, I would contact the superintendent's office, let your, and then he may tell you, you know, use the board secretaries to coordinate it, or maybe the superintendent's secretary will coordinate it. That way also academic services know, the principal is aware, because you're a board member, elected public official. So if you show up at the school, they may want to, you know, stop classes because you're there. So we just want to be careful so that they know as well. That's normally how it has happened in the past.
If we are invited, though, to a site visit, do we also need to, or just go through the means that the school is?
So such and such a middle school has invited you to come to the science fair. How do you do that?
I've never gone through the superintendent.
You go.
You go through secretaries.
I ask the secretaries.
Put it on your calendar.
But I always, I always work with the school. I never show up on a note.
Of course.
Not that you can't.
Right.
I just, I just think that it-
And they'll put it on your calendar, so that way it's there.
The school buildings belong to you as elected officials. The only thing I would say is, I always try, even with my visits, I try to make sure, in my particular case, that I'm still announcing visits prior to my arrival, because I don't want to disrupt the normal educational flow of a day. But if you're invited to the Battle of the Books, or you're invited to read at a school kindergarten class, go and have fun, because it is the rewarding part of these positions.
And you don't always have some rewarding parts, so take them when they're available to you.
There was the one part in here too, about if you're a parent or grandparent, when you're there at your child's school.
Yes.
Who are you?
Yes. That's actually a really good question. I raised both of my children while I was on the school board. And I will tell you, the principal at my children's elementary school, she was very, she had control over that school. She was quite, I don't want to say disciplinarian, but she was on top of things. And as a board member, even though she knew me as a parent before I got on the board, it changes the dynamic. You cannot pretend it does not, because it does. And so, when I went to my children's school, I only went to my children's school as a parent. I think it's important, I can rely on the rest of my board if there are problems at that school. When I come here, I want to be the parent to my kids. I don't want my kids to confuse that. I don't want the teachers to confuse that. I don't want the other parents to confuse that. I intentionally did not wear suits, because I think you have to be clear. If you're gonna be the parent, you're the parent. If you walk in with your badge and say you're the parent, no, you're not. You've got your badge on. And so you have to be careful how you approach that. And people will talk to you, and you can just say, "Hey, when I'm at the school, I'm the parent." And it's an easy way to beg away. But I think if you have children and grandchildren, they want you to be the mother, the father, the grandmother, grandfather. They don't want you to be the board member. And in fact, your children will probably resent the fact that you're a board member. If I can tell you how my life went, you know, your kids may want to participate in one Christmas parade, but that's about all you're gonna get, because it's boring to them, it's slow. I remember on a Mother's Day, the kids were saying what their moms do best, and one of the little girls said to my son, Vinny, I'll never forget it, "Your mom goes to meetings." And I was mortified. I mean, that's the best thing I do, is go to meetings, but that's what I got. So really trying to keep that line will help you as a human being, and you need that work-life balance. And I think if you can really help protect that for your own self and your family, you'll appreciate it, and your family will appreciate it.
Thank you. Was there any other questions?
Visitation of schools was a good one.
So there's just one other thing regarding if you're invited to go to a school, or if you're going to the FSBA conference, or whenever you're going to be there as a group. We want to make sure that we notice it. We notice it on our website so the public is aware that there may be two or more board members attending this particular function. That's why it's important for us to have that information. Again, it's to protect you, make sure there's no one alleging sunshine violations, because that is what the law says to a more board members together that can be discussing something that is coming before or may come before them is a sunshine violation. So if you're going to visit a school that was impacted by Hurricane, like, they went through hoops the other day to bring all of the board members to visit different schools. Kathy was very insistent that you can't be together in visiting these schools, and they had to layer how everyone was gonna visit, because, in protecting of you. Because obviously Hurricane Ian is gonna come before the board for some type of discussion.
Yeah. Just be careful and ask your attorney.
System team.
So the only thing that we have on this agenda is good of the order. If anyone has anything good of the order, I'll just go around the table to ask that. Dr. B?
I'm gonna read this into the record, but I think it's important, because I know some people will be watching, and I'm always last, chairman.
Oh, I can, we'll go backwards.
No, I'll do it very quickly, I just have to get to the right page in the planner. We're very excited, we learned yesterday in cabinet that for several years, the Arts Festival downtown for our student body had to be postponed or canceled. That will return, that is going to return on March 3. The Arts Festival will be downtown Fort Myers from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. It's always been a huge turnout. It's moved from just several schools participating to double figures of the schools that are participating, and we expect thousands of people to be. And the only thing that will be going on are student art, student, fine art, student musical performances, choral performances, and we will sort of take over downtown and the restaurants, and, you know, I think it'll be a great opportunity by March to help downtown sort of revitalize a little bit, and our students to be at the forefront of that. So I wanted you to put that on your calendars as soon as possible.
What was that date? I want to see if I'm available.
March 3.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And you have not, and not everybody's met Mr. Tomaszewski yet, Dr. Tomaszewski. When you do, there's a reason why the arts are alive in our, in our school buildings, and he's, he's a critical component to that work.
And that is a great event because we do take over the downtown.
That's after, um, school hours.